Be here, welcome to the board's super meeting for Thursday, May 1st. Please stand for the collection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please raise your hands for the prayer.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for all who are gathered here this evening. I thank you for your son, and we just celebrated his resurrection just recently. Lord, give us all the strength and wisdom to continue to persevere in this world and to shine bright. And you're handling him with prayer. Amen.
There was two executive sessions held. One was April 23rd for a CBA discussion for CBA's collective bargaining agreement with the police department. And on the 29th personnel in specific about that, and about our manager search. We were talking to the headhunter. This evening's meeting is being recorded for rebroadcast purposes on YouTube. At this time, I'd like to welcome anyone to come forward for public comment on agenda titles. Please come forward, state your name, so we have it clear for the meeting minutes.
Good evening. Alan Maxwell. Review the meetings from last before the ministry this evening in regards to Stevens Fire Company. As a citizen and being observant of what's been going on over the last year with the merger between Smoestown and Rees Town, I just had some concerns in regards to this. Question I'd like to find out from them is why they chose Denver instead of merging with the other two companies? They were verbally opposed to any kind of merger, sharing anything with anyone. And it just seems kind of odd that they're doing that now after this merger's moving forward. Secondly, I'm concerned as to why they don't come to the meeting themselves and inform you folks in person of what their decision was and what they've been doing. To do it in a letter, to me, is not necessarily the right way to do it. It's a major decision that involves the whole community and as such, and the funding that you provide them, they shouldn't have given you the respect and courtesy to come forward and give that to you in person. Second, one of the things I've read is about relinquishing duty control to Denver in certain situations. My concern for that is liability. How's that going to affect the township? Does anything, if anything goes wrong, who's responsible? How's that going to work? It is very concerning in that respect that East Calico could get on the hook for something they had no control over, since they're in the township. In my opinion, two things need to happen. During the merger process, Stevens was adamantly opposed to changing their number, quite vocally, quite angrily, going that, giving that opposition. In this respect here, since they chose to align themselves with Denver, I feel they should give up the 17 number and choose a number that more aligns closely with Denver.
They did.
Oh, they did? I wasn't aware of that. Okay, very good, thank you. Secondly, I believe since they chose to align with Denver, and Denver is a very well-funded department, that the township should no longer be responsible to offer that funding to them that they have been. They chose to separate away from East Calico and align with Denver. And in my opinion, that resolves East Calico, other responsibility of continuing that funding. Put those out for consideration, have those questions asked, maybe we get some answers, maybe we don't. But it's very concerning as a citizen to see that liability possibly especially come up. We could, could feel some impact from that. We already have a merger that's going through quite successfully. If they changed their mind on a merger, there's no reason they could not have come onboard to Smoestown and Rees Town and joined that, that merged company down the road as it was finalized. So as a citizen, that's where my concerns are. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you guys are aware, I know there's normally a timer behind us, but I have it on myself. Just so we keep the rules the same for everybody. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. Denver Wholesale Foods, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dwight Goder. I'm the president of the Credit Union House. On behalf of Denver Wholesale Foods, Gary Martin and Paul Weaver are there beside me, and then kind of the rest of the Denver Wholesale Foods crew is with us this evening. And the reason for the presentation is to follow up on a letter that I had sent to the supervisors. Oh, I think it's been a few months now regarding the possibility of a text amendment to allow Denver Wholesale Foods the ability to essentially expand their existing operation in Effort of Township. So I did bring hard copies of my letter, and I have one or two other handouts. I'm a little old school, I like the paper, so if you would like that, I can hand that out. And then I'll have Gary give a little introduction to the company, and then go through kind of what we want to talk about. Well, they're currently located in Effort of Township.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, but, but yes, they are looking to, yes. And then, this is just more for reference, but I put a circle on the map to show.
You can aim it to, which patch.
Okay, that's great, thanks. And then Gary put together a little packet. Again, I'm not, we're not trying to overwhelm you. He might be like, oh man, we're going to be here all night. So... Just very briefly, Denver Wholesale Foods is a discount grocery wholesaler and distributor. They were founded in 2006 by Gary Martin and Moses Stausus. Mr. Stausus has since passed away. The current owners include Gary Martin, Myers Stausus, Moses' son, Paul Weaver, Christian and Clayton Martin, who are Gary's children. So this is kind of a quintessential Lancaster County family of business. They, the Martins all live in East Calico Township, and Paul lives in West Calico Township. Since 2011, they, their business has been located in Effort of Township. As Gary will explain, they continue to experience growth. They provide a lot of important services to the community and a lot of discount brochures. As I'm sure the board members know, it's not easy in today's world for a lot of people to make ends meet. And what they do is they provide discount groceries to families that can use it and be able to feed their families, hopefully not spending as much as you might go to a regular giant or other grocery store. So Gary, why don't you just come up and introduce yourself? And if there's anything in that packet you handed out you wanted to highlight, do that. And then I'll go over why we are asking the board to give us some feedback and consideration for a possible text amendment.
My name's Gary Martin, and thank you for allowing us to make a presentation this evening. The Burgundy booklet is the one that I put together today for you guys. Just mentioned, there's a letter at the beginning of that that I wrote, which explains some of what Dwight already said and much more. And then, secondly, we have a picture there of our existing facility in Effort of Township. We've built that property out to its limit, and we have 133,000 square feet of warehouse there. But we are bursting at the seams, and we need more space locally. Then I put some pictures of some of our local customers that I think you'll recognize the names. Some in East Calico, some in the surrounding townships. We have a lot of customers throughout, in various communities, but the highest concentration, of course, is right here in Lancaster County. And then I have some block plans there, I kind of go along with it. And last of all, I have a page with our business cards, Paul Weaver and my business cards. We'd be happy, if you have any questions for us, to reach out to us. But I'd like to just share a little bit, we established Denver Wholesale Foods as a discount grocery wholesaler. And we established that for the purpose of buying food and grocery manufacturers, excess inventories, closeouts of distressed products. And we do that for the purpose of keeping that product out of landfills and selling it at a discount to various customers. We have some of the retailers, like I mentioned. But also, we also sell to a lot of prisons, food banks, restaurants, auctions, catering companies, nursing homes, summer camps, retreats, Woodcrest Retreat, Refreshing Mountain Camp, which are local ones that you're probably familiar with. And then also co-ops, we have a lot of co-ops, which are like church groups, school groups, who get together and buy and volume to take advantage of wholesale pricing. And this market is collectively known as the secondary market. And so many of the vendors that we buy from, they require us to promise, make a commitment that it will not end up back in the regular market. And so it has to stay on the secondary market. And then I'd also just mention that we are, Dwight mentioned it, but reiterated it, we are a very local company. We live in East and West Calico Townships. And this is our home, and we're not going anywhere. And the other thing, logistically, we have to locate in this area because we don't own trucks. We don't have our own truck fleet. So Denver Logistics is our main distributor, and they're West Calico based. And so we have to, most of, much of our deliveries are made by them. So we have to stay in the northern Lancaster County Calico area to maintain that relationship. So, other than that, please read the letter I wrote for more details.
Right, yeah, that's great. So I'm going to just briefly go over the property that Denver Wholesale Foods owns, and I think it was attached to Gary's or to my letter. You can see this was just an aerial with the properties outlined. If you had a chance to look at my letter before and explain that from a zoning standpoint, if you go to the next page, you can see that it kind of straddles the line between your C1 commercial and your light industrial. And part of the reason we're here is because of the unique features that basically constrain the light industrial portions. And up on the screen, there is displayed this bigger plan that essentially shows what is also shown on Exhibit C, which is the area, the dotted line there, that's the dividing line between C1 and LI. And if you look to the north there, all of those areas that have kind of the gray heavier area are constrained by floodplains and wetlands. And so essentially, a majority of the light industrial land, which would permit food, warehouse, processing and distribution facilities, can't be used. And portions of these properties are essentially called split zone, which means half of it is in one zoning district, and that the other half is in another zoning district. That also complicates things. So what we are exploring, and we would like the supervisors to give us feedback if they're able, is the possibility of a text amendment to allow a property that essentially is split zoned with a portion in the industrial district and a portion in the commercial district, and has at least 40 acres, and has frontage to an arterial or major collector road, the ability to have storage or wholesaling of food products. My experience is, before we go through and submit the petition and spend the time and money to do that, it's better to come to the supervisor informally. Because as you know, this is referred to as a legislative decision. It's a policy decision. It's in your discretion. So you can say, we'll consider it. You can say, I woke up this morning in a bad mood and I don't want to hear anything about it. Or we can say, we like it. It's really up to you. And so in my experience, it's much better to get a sense from the board if they're willing to consider it. No board's going to say, we'll vote for it. But some votes will say, we won't vote for it. So if you tell me you're not going to vote for it, there's really no reason for us to proceed. However, if the supervisors are willing to consider it, then what we would do is we would start the process. Typically, we would put together a draft and run it by township staff to get their feedback. And then after that, we would go through the process of preparing a petition that gets then referred to the county planning commission, the township planning commission, for their recognition. You know the drill. So, I think Gary has been coming to your meetings, and we know that warehouses have been a hot topic. So let's just, I'll just put that out there. We understand that, and we appreciate that. This is not proposing to rezone land to open up other areas to just any type of warehousing. We try to be very intentional, both about the unique aspects of this property, and that it only applies to food wholesaling and storage, which by the way, is a separate category in zoning ordinance currently, so we're not creating a whole new use classification. But also, I would just highlight that in Lancaster County, the easy sites are all long on. And so when you have local businesses that are trying to expand, they are now stuck with hiring land use attorney and going through this process. And the reality of it is, I'm in Westerville Township right now, I'm the same thing. I'm in Effort of Township, I'm in East Lampeter Township. And these townships generally want to support and keep their businesses in the area, but they're concerned about unintended consequences. And that's always the fine line and dilemma. And we are sensitive to that, and so we certainly would want to draft a text amendment that would, in essence, support and help a local business stay in the area, but also be sensitive to concerns that the township may have about opening this up to additional warehouse facilities in your commercial zone. So let me just take a pause there and see if there's any comments or questions, or Gary, anything that you in addition wanted to add. But we really were just hoping for some initial feedback and thoughts, because like I said, I think it's better to come early on before any official petition is submitted. And if you feel like you need some time to think about it, we understand that as well. But we would, I think we would appreciate any kind of feedback or thoughts or questions you might have.
One of the issues we continue to deal with is residents that are looking for more businesses within our towns or commercial use businesses. We don't have enough. People all the time have to leave our community for shopping purposes. It's one of the reasons that I'm not supposed to speak for the other two gentlemen, but look at the commercial zoning that we do have, and am reluctant to say goodbye to it for other purposes. This is a unique property. There's a lot of challenges to it. You've said it, we've all seen it. Is there an idea that you have that could lend some commercial use to part of the property that would leave the rest of it the light industrial in a reconfigured way?
Yeah, I think we talked about that. We, Gary, talked a little bit about maybe having a retail component of what they do. That's a little counterproductive to their customers to offer, you know, discount grocery stores at this location when that would be competing against their customers. But I think we are open to trying to figure out how we can preserve some commercial space. Part of the dilemma is, the light industrial is where we want to be, and that is zoned properly for what we want to do, but it's not usable. And so it's in some ways truly a unique situation, because if we could use that light industrial, but I even kind of went around and circled with the engineer, like is there a way you can push some of this up into the light industrial? But if you look on the screen, all those squiggling lines, those are called topo lines. And the closer they are together, the steeper it is. So this, this thing slopes pretty hard down. And my understanding is, whenever you start messing with wetlands, it gets complicated. So...
So...
Yeah.
This is your cut right here, so this is commercial currently. This is light industrial. This is all wetlands here?
Yes, wetlands. And then there's a, there's a big power easement that runs on the north end. Yup, yup. So almost all the light industrial area is constrained. And so what we are suggesting is a text amendment that would, you know, be very focused on this unique situation.
Is there any, that was one of my questions, is there any other property in East Calico Township that would fit that description for that text amendment?
I can't say with certainty, but I would say very few if any. And I would add, it's a warehouse for a food product.
Yeah, you made it very distinct and unique, so I would guess there's probably zero.
So you would have to have a combination of a company that wants a warehouse for food, that split locked zone, it's 40 acres and fronts an arterial road.
I don't know.
I doubt.
I don't think so.
Yeah. So I mean, again, there's always a balancing act. You want to be sure that text amendments are proposed in a way that can withstand legal scrutiny. But proprietors have the right to go to their elected officials and ask for changes. And so essentially, we're trying to find a balance that would address legitimate concerns about all your commercial space being used up for warehouses, which is a legitimately concern and one that I recognize. And I wish I had a better answer for you, but Denver Wholesale Foods needs a warehouse. So, you know, to the extent that they could have some space for commercial uses, I think they'd be willing to consider that.
So Dan, permitting the process to continue would allow the planning commission to, to make sense, dig deeper into... Is there anything that's similar?
I was curious on that one. Two buildings you guys have done on that, because it sounded like very unique, so they're trying to keep it.
That would be a...
Yeah, that's where I got at it. What, have you, I wrote down some notes. So I'm sure with all the thought that's gone into this, with all the packets you guys have had, do you have an idea of what you want this property to look like? I mean, I see your beautiful property over here in Effort of Township, and I remember when you started there many years ago.
We want it to be more beautiful than that. Because we would be starting from scratch. That's been piecemeal built. And Richard did a great job in the last edition, but still not as beautiful as if you start from scratch.
Right, and...
I think generally, the footprint would be primarily in the commercial area, because we can't, like I said, I was asking, could you swing the building so half of it is commercial, half of it's light industrial? But if you see that little finger of wetland, the township engineer ratted me a bit, I mean, not the township engineer, our engineer, and said, hmm, that's probably not the best idea. And then you start getting into slope. So I think what they were thinking of, and this is very conceptual, was having the stormwater by the power easements there, and then having the building footprint kind of more closer to 272.
Here? With the building footprint going into the industrial?
No.
Building footprint would be here, stormwater manager back here.
Yup, in that area.
This feedback here.
That would be the stormwater. You really can't touch the...
Oh, you can't touch?
Yeah, those are all...
So you're going to put your ear in with it, right?
Well, it'll be a stormwater easement. We'll add it.
Yeah, okay.
And, yeah.
How many acres is that? I'm sorry, how many acres is that?
They have about total of 40, is a number of different parcels.
Do you have any idea how much this portion is?
That's a good question. I'm just looking at here. If you, you can look at this, this is the zoning one. So you can see, a majority of the land is in the light industrial. So the frontage here, it goes pretty far off to the, you know, industrial park, close to the industrial park up above there. So I would say of the 40 acres, I'm just going to rough say 25 acres are in the light industrial, and 15 would be in the commercial. That's a ballpark.
Okay. And other than perhaps supporting stormwater facilities, is the light industrial section capable of any use under the ordinance?
None. Yeah, there would be no, and like I said at the beginning, industrials on the land in Lancaster County, it's very hard to come by. And so it is valuable, and the fact that it's constrained, I think removes kind of a key portion of your light industrial zoning from being, from being developed the way it was intended to. So, I mean, at the end of the day, we appreciate the desire to keep the commercial land. We understand that. And I think local residents should have those opportunities. Having said that, I do think this is a company that supports local residents, maybe in a different way, by providing food at a lower cost, which is also a really valuable thing to the community. So I guess my point is, having a local company that's providing local services feels a bit different to me in terms of how this property would be used.
The property was purchased all as one. I think they pieced five different tracks.
Okay.
And there's three tracks that front the 272.
Okay. And putting the building out front there, would access be on 272, or would it come out to Kurt's Road through the light industrial? Would you, did you get that far?
We didn't get that far. I suspect it would be 272.
And like what size building were you guys thinking?
Ballpark.
100, 200, 1,000 square feet. One, whatever we can fit in.
Do you have a napkin drawing, what you're thinking? For instance, I'd say that as soon as you...
Well, it's a warehouse, so it'll be right angle.
Right. As soon as you hear warehouse, 100, 200, 1,000 square feet, you immediately think of right here. Right at the top.
Well, that's...
That's 300, but that's still, you know, that's immediate. Now, I look at your property over at Effort of Township, and that's not as eyesore, we'll say. I don't know if that makes sense, so... We look at, we look over, if you would go a little bit north, you know, towards industrial way, and you see some of the buildings that are built over there, they're not as, they're a little bit more low profile. So that's what I was wondering, if you had any kind of preliminary drawings to show what your overall profile would look like?
I think we would be...
Are you going to be 30 feet tall?
We'd be willing to work with township planning commission and staff to include potential design criteria so that it blends in and it's not an eyesore.
And that's what I was going to suggest, you know, take a little form-based approach. It could be an industrial building that looks like a commercial.
Right, yeah.
That's what I was talking about.
You know, that fits into particularly along Route 8, a commercial side.
We're not turning away this portion. We're not, I mean, I know that's already...
Right.
But we're not, does that make sense?
That makes sense. I mean, the concern would be, it's not a huge industrial-looking warehouse there, and nobody wants to do commercial on either side. Whereas if you put in a building that looks commercial... Whereas if you put in a building that looks commercial and maybe even integrates some space for some stores that could be leased out, I mean, again, I don't want to get out of my skis with my client, but to address one, you know, some of those concerns, maybe there is a win-win here that actually provides an opportunity for some small commercial space.
Yep. Some small businesses up front here, something.
Yeah.
It's all, yeah. More leasing opportunities.
You know, I noticed that one of your vendors is in the affordable housing project in Denver. You know, there's a great example of a housing project in a commercial district that has commercial and, and a viable commercial services and retail first floor.
I guess what I've been hearing you say that for this, this size building, there's very little of it, of it, if any, would be in the light, current light industrial area.
My goal was to come here tonight and show half the building in the light industrial and our engineer said no. So I'm just being honest with you because I felt like that would be an easier sell, to be honest with you. Half of it was sitting in the light industrial. But that little finger there and the steep slopes, he said, I mean, could we put a wing in there if that helps?
You're talking about this little finger?
Yeah, that little finger right there, he said that that's a problem. Because I was thinking, could you rotate it, put the building, you know, running north and south? So yeah, I said, but Gary, he wasn't too happy about that suggestion.
So pretty much, pretty much we're looking at a piece of commercial property on the front, a piece of light industrial you can't do nothing with. So it should have never been zoned light industrial to begin with if it's all wetlands.
And Mike and I were whispering, your, your wetlands offer an opportunity to, to integrate some more sophisticated stormwater management that perhaps does permit something in that's, that, that middle section rather than just the basin. And I think we're looking at a proposal on Denver Road there with.
Similar, yeah.
Similar to that. I mean, and it's not preserving farmland, but it's preserving valuable wetlands.
I think we are open to all suggestions. I mean, honestly, it's so hard to find land in Lancaster County right now for local businesses that this is what we need to do. We need to be creative on some of these properties, but it requires partnering with elected officials.
Well, I'm, I've, I've been making the same joke as you. We've done all the easy ones.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. I mean, so just, we have a local company trying to grow.
I was just going to say.
They, they, they're looking at doing something in the township. Yes, it might be a warehouse that we, we've expressed many times, we're not interested in warehouses. Every property is unique in its own way. This is one of them. And again, they're, they're local, they're helping families in need, a lot of families in need. You saw in the packet here, there's four or five big locally that they sell to. I mean, if we, if we push it along and try to get planning to hash out a couple of things and not make it look like a warehouse and make it look more like a commercial building and they can throw some commercial component there in the front possibly. I mean, they can't commit to it now, but obviously if, if we, if we push it along a little bit to see what, what they can propose back to us, kind of work with us a little bit, I mean, I'd be in favor of pushing it ahead. It's not just a typical warehouse and we're going to have a national tenant in here and you don't know who they are. I mean, I think they've proven themselves to, to be in a part of this community and obviously they live here and it's kind of, this brings me back kind of to, it was before me, when you were on the board, you guys previously approved Earth Care from Wood. He was local, he outgrew his business, he wanted to expand here in the township. Obviously it's not a warehouse. Half of it almost you could say looks like, like industrial because of the trucks and stuff. But you also got another local company that keeps expanding and creating jobs locally for seasons. That, that's local. I'd, I'd consider this kind of, kind of the same thing.
That's exactly what I was just going to say. For the local business, I'm, 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 I, in my opinion, am interested in here anymore. That's why I was asking about preliminary drawings and just trying to see what it's locally. You made it, you're looking at a tax amendment that would be unique probably within the entire You're already here, you want to stay here. So I'm, I'd be willing to have further conversation. I don't know where it's going to go, what we can figure out, a little finger and how you guys would weigh it out. That'd be difficult. Obviously, you know, I have plenty of thoughts on what it could look like and commercial maintaining some portion there on the front. I don't know if that's possible. You'll have a wish list, I'm sure, but I'd be interested in listening to further conversation.
I guess the main question for Mr. Martin, since you're here, you know, it, it sounds like you want to try and maximize the, the lot for size of, of a new building. Is it part of your thought process that it need not be as big as you would really like in order to have some other commercial components to it as well?
I think, I think we're willing to take wherever we can get. The, the one, the one challenge and maybe concern that I would have about adding the commercial is now you're, you're mixing like car traffic with truck traffic and I'm not sure how that helps us in, in terms of planning, but I mean, maybe it's something we could work, work through and we're looking at more than one entrance.
Is this currently, is this currently a road? Is that what this is right here, an access?
That is the power line easement.
Oh, that's the power line easement road?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, we own out the Curze Road down there, but there's all kinds of, it's very wet for one thing, so there is like a little road that goes in there now that was built up over the wet, but yeah, we, we have to get permission from Met Ed, is it? The, the, is it, you know, they, they have to sign off. They have to.
I don't want to put a car for the horse, but you've heard this. And there's been many, many times access along two seventy-two.
It used to be.
I mean, even.
You're saying that, facetious.
Your answer. So even the chairman here has had issues with some of that, so.
We're, we're well aware.
I'm, you know, I, I like the idea. I do appreciate the presentation. I think that's probably what we, I don't want to speak fully, I'll just stop there.
We, we realize that's a big room, but we like to try.
Well, when I, when I tell supervisors and elected officials, we are not asking for any commitment. We understand if this goes forward and if we submit a petition and it gets to the hearing, you have every right to vote however you feel at that point. So we are not asking for how you might vote. What we're really asking is if you're willing for us to continue the process and see if we can come up with some additional ideas based on your feedback and at some point get to a point where you feel comfortable submitting a petition and starting the process.
I, I think you've heard that some different ideas from all of us, but you know, once again, a, a commercial component is, I think, important from, from my perspective.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I, I put that down as something that we will try and integrate. We'll have to look at the traffic, but it makes a lot of sense if we can do that to essentially keep some of that commercial, which is the way it's zoned while allowing Denver wholesale lose some warehouse space. Thank you very much. Appreciate your feedback and we will likely circle back with the township engineer, solicitor and manager, and then depending on their feedback, we'll either go to the planning commission informally, like we did here, that if they think that's helpful, or we'll work the township staff and then, you know, submit, come back to the supervisor possibly. And.
You're always invited in our.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to action items, meeting minutes for approval. I don't have any changes. Is that about you guys?
Neither do I.
I'll make a motion to approve the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we got resolution twenty twenty-five, eleven, crossings at Calico, Land and Home and Plan twenty twenty-four. That is your lead. Thank you.
Yes, so you are familiar, we discussed this project on several occasions. This is now we've prepared, we being staff, with manager Melody and Matt's input, we prepared the resolution that's before you this evening outlining the conditions of preliminary land approval and a listing of all waivers and other items in that resolution. I do want to bring one item to your attention. A lot of these we've gone over in the past. We can go over any questions that you might have from before, obviously, but there is one change, one proposed change that was made by the applicant that was related to item P under the waivers and deferrals. Staff had initially recommended or put down in draft form a deferral for the sidewalks based on the discussions that we had had, I believe it was last month, related to this final sidewalk design on the west side of West Fortsville Road. The applicant has since come back and there is a blue line version in your packet for your review tonight, changing that deferral to a waiver request and some verbiage changes that were suggested by the applicant in addition to that. So if we have any questions, we can certainly go over that, but that was the one highlight that you haven't seen in draft that you had previously made in your packet.
So if I, if I'm not mistaken, we have, to be consistent with, with everyone across the board, we have always deferred, we have not waived.
That has been your past practice. That's correct. And I believe that was noted, I know Richie noted that in one of the responses or Matt who relayed that to the applicant and their counsel as well, that has been the best practice. And that was the recommendation of the planning commission as well, to, to basically stay consistent with that past practice.
Any changes need to happen to letter P there or, because I see waiver there as well?
Uh, there's no proposed, no. No, that was actually, that waiver request is actually specific to utilizing a paved trail in lieu of your standard concrete sidewalk. So that would be applicable in that case, just for the alternative proposed.
So it would only be letter P here?
Right. Letter P would, would be the deferral and or waiver. And again, this is for the frontage along eight ninety-seven, which would be along the frontage of the subject track of eight ninety-seven.
Letter Q refers to the west side of eight ninety-seven.
West side and also the paved trail throughout the development of the village.
And, but just to review, that was, looked to be a concrete sidewalk on the west side of eight ninety-seven.
That would be concrete, yeah. Your standard concrete. Yeah, we, we, we did put the verbiage in the way we did was because we had some items, there was exhibits provided related to a proposed layout and obviously we haven't fine tuned that to a point yet, but we can do that at the final phase one plan stage. So I, instead of hashing it out at this point, it makes sense to re, and review that design as part of that phase one file, which is how its letter is present.
So it's not, it's not a design done deal yet?
It's not a design done deal yet, that's correct. Subject to a.
And you said, sorry, the, the blue is what we did or maybe?
The blue is what's proposed by the applicant, so that's what Rich, yeah.
I mean, we have a, I guess for Matt, the, the language not in blue was, was previously proposed.
Correct. And that was a collaborative product, but mostly Rich and Melody and Mike. Again, based on prior documents.
So the motion is to approve what's here or the motion is to approve what we wrote?
I guess there's two alternatives. I guess the, the one would be, and the applicants here may might, if you have questions for them as well, but essentially if they're agreeable to the original verbiage, you could approve the original resolution that was drafted by staff, or if you chose, you could entertain the proposed language from the applicant and just note that in your motion.
And aside from that deferral versus waiver issue in P, the language was cleaned up, so it would be highlights. It's improved over the first two.
It's okay.
If you could just decide whether my deferral sidewalk, I have a copy.
Either way, yeah.
Yeah, if I may, I mean, I'm bringing mine as with Garmin Brothers. The language in blue is consistent with the letter that we submitted on April second from our attorney general. So we believe the language that we proposed is consistent with the letter that we threw over your questions of, or.
And I think this is, I'm, you know, it's all I think I've actually spoken with you yet. This is my first movement of bringing it here, but I think part of this came from the fact that I wasn't at the last meeting, but there was discussion about the sidewalk along the frontage of the development track being basically a sidewalk to nowhere. And so as a compromise, I think that's why we were offering the off-site sidewalk on the west side in lieu of the sidewalk on the development side of the property. So it's not like there wouldn't be a sidewalk or means of pedestrian access, it's just on the opposite side is what we would be pursuing. And that was based on the fact from the board that they didn't want the sidewalk going to nowhere. So it is a waiver in the sense. It is a waiver in the sense that it's not going to be on our development frontage, but there is still going to be a sidewalk and that's where we're offering an alternative. And I think that was the understanding out of that.
However, I don't recall saying waiver or deferral for.
I don't think we discussed waiver or deferral. It may have been in the letter. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, I mean, I see a couple letters.
Yeah. I understand the waiver versus the deferral. We all agreed that the, it was really to have a sidewalk on that side of the road. I don't know if we'll ever have a sidewalk on that side of the road. I mean, I can't see thirty years in the future, but.
No, let's get.
No.
The farm there gets developed one day and people put sidewalks in fifty years from now, if you defer it, then they'll have to put sidewalks there too and then it'll tie into something.
The intersection could get upgraded majorly some point, should.
I'll be bringing that up later on in my, in my meeting because I spoke to somebody from the planning commission in Lancaster, so. I'm ready to move forward with staying consistent at deferring it versus waiving it. Like you said, if it happens in thirty, forty years, that's fine. I mean, there are, the waiver list goes from letter A to, to R. I mean, we're almost at the end of the alphabet, so for one letter, I think, I mean, we've done a lot to try to make this project come out of the ground.
Yeah, we're not going to be agreeing on putting a wholesale blueprint, so. This is in blue.
So that was my question. If it's a deferral, when does your responsibility stop? Thirty years from now, which you wouldn't be responsible for putting in the sidewalk. So who would be responsible for putting the sidewalk thirty years from now?
That's where I was going to say, this would get ultimately put on the HOA or the homeowners association that gets established. So it is a challenge to kind of pass that responsibility on because Garrett's not going to own, you know, this area, so. And I do, I do want to reiterate, that was the reason why Garmin was agreeable to doing the extensive amount of sidewalk improvements on the west side because there is, to, you know, ensure that there is continuity and pedestrian access. So I think that they're going above and beyond to give the board what they're looking for as far as pedestrian improvements. I think a waiver is reasonable here.
What do you guys want to do?
I think, in my opinion, I think waiver, I mean, we've talked about this and we beat this sidewalk to death. I don't think there'll ever be a sidewalk on that side of eight ninety-seven. And if eight ninety-
And if 897 gets bigger and expands because there's a lot more residential backup there, they don't want it to happen, so why in any way the sidewalk will be going? I don't have a problem with waiving that side. My opinion, they've already agreed they're going to do the sidewalk on the other side, off-site improvements. I don't, I don't think this is something to argue about.
But I'm just curious, if that intersection gets revamped, that field next to them gets developed?
Which field, further up 897?
We're in next one, the property next to them, the farm. If they, they're going to probably have to put in sidewalks and whatever. So if, if we waive it, it's on people. If we defer it, whoever's got to pay for it later has to pay for it.
What is the farm zone up the road down?
I mean, you see people coming in here all the time trying to get things resumed.
Well, we've also talked up here.
If it's residential, if it's residential.
Do you know what it's on, right, the farm that's just up the road from us? Because we don't.
Well, you have one, Matt, we're here.
I would add that making us do the off-site sidewalk, insisting to our sidewalk in the future, that's making us be done with that.
I probably should have asked this question.
That's right, I said, how long is it? It wouldn't be your responsibility after a certain amount of time, is that correct?
If, if you waive or defer and as your choice is, you're going to get, what is it, a macadam surface trail? Is that the plan for?
Yep.
Yes. Is a middle ground, that there would be a development easement around that macadam trail? That if 50 years in the future, there's, you know, new infrastructure built from the federal government, that, you know, some third party could fund sidewalks or whatever? Something that we would be interested in seeing. That this property on, that obligation would run which property to the homeowners association and future owners? That there, that a third party, whether it's us or Pendott or neighboring, developer could enter in and install signs, is one of those.
I mean, I don't want to speak for you, I don't think there's a concern.
You're already committed to it being a way.
Yes.
Whether it's a macadam drive or a walkway or a, or a concrete sidewalk.
Yeah, you mean along the frontage.
You're not going to, you're not going to take the way away, away.
Right, no, I think that's reasonable. It's just our concern was that having to build the off-site sidewalk improvements and then also having to do it on our side.
Yeah, as long as we're not responsible.
You're worried we're going to come back and say, hey, now you're going to do this, should we just do reset?
Right.
And we're having a hard time imagining when that could happen.
Well, right, but then we would agree to a condition that township or comes back to us at a time that it would be developed with responsibility, then the cost to construct the sidewalk on our side would be there.
Oh, so you're saying if, if we did a deferral as opposed to a waiver, you'd want, you'd want to guarantee that if we came back to you in the next two years from, before the development's done and it's all dedicated or whatever, that we would give you your money back if we forced you to build a sidewalk on the other side?
Correct, we're spending the money with the sidewalk across the street.
I understand, it's a business, I get it.
Yeah, because again, we were going, our plans originally showed sidewalk on this side, but we were told, don't do that, there's a sidewalk to nowhere. So that's why we've come up with this compromise. And now to have the potential of having to do it again on top of the compromising solution.
I don't think we're going to tell you to do it, but the wording is what matters here, the furl versus waiver. And just to be consistent across the board, everyone's always said deferred versus waiver. So I don't think this board is going to come and say, no, you got to do it. But that is what it deferral, you know, I understand.
We would have no assurance of that, I understand.
If you feel that way, then deferral or we're fine.
I totally get it, and unfortunately, it's the cost of doing business. We're all, you know, I'm trying to develop a site as well and it's same thing. Deferrals versus waivers, if we waive it, then our hands are tied. Supervisors 20 years from now, they want a sidewalk there? They're going to say, look at those idiots, they waived it, they didn't defer it. Why they deferred over there and they didn't do it here? So to be consistent, I mean, I walked into this three years ago and there was projects up and down, all around East Kukaliko, deferred, deferred, deferred. So I could go in and say, hey, I don't like you, you're doing sidewalks, but we're not doing that. I would like to leave the option there in case, you know, I just looked at the zoning.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we want, we won't construct the sidewalk on our side, we're not, we're complying with the ordinance.
Now we're back to that conversation. There's many ways you can go to this way.
You're looking for a timeframe that, that you will not have to construct a sidewalk on your side.
Or, or a trigger.
Or a trigger. I think that's, since none of us.
Because many, many deferrals are granted. And, you know, and I have many plans where the deferral is granted, recognizing that it would be impossible to put sidewalks and curbs in the location because of slopes, rock, ridges, et cetera, but it's a deferral.
But then how many of those plans were they being made to construct sidewalks?
Again, the township has never come back on this because there's never going to be a triggering event.
This site could be a triggering event, but I can't see the future in 15, 20 years from now. Or if I go to waive it, Pendott says, hey, we got to put sidewalks here, well, the township waived it. I'm sure they'll find a way to.
Well, so again, my suggestion on the middle ground is a development easement that says somebody would have the opportunity to put sidewalks there. Because if you waive it, then nobody has the opportunity. We would need to, Pendott would need to condemn a sidewalk easement or something like that.
So do you want a word, you guys, you got to be agreeable to that?
As long as we don't have to pay to construct the sidewalk or we get any.
So it would be a waiver conditioned on a.
Is it a, or a condition on?
Well, I would think it'd be a waiver conditioned on because we still would never have to build it. We, our, our intent is that we, it would be on us to build the sidewalk.
So it would be a waiver conditioned on them essentially dedicating a, 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 a development easement for purposes of future sidewalk. And Mike and your design engineer can figure out what that means. And it's probably the width of your macadam walk with a couple of wings.
Yes. Granted to the township to basically.
For public purpose.
For public, yeah.
Because generally the waiver is, you can never recite the line. But a waiver with a construction easement is kind of a halfway to a deferral. Do I hear a motion?
So one, one more discussion I have here. With that idea in mind, where does the responsibility lie for construction of sidewalks?
It's, it's open-ended.
Undetermined.
Again, you know, some future board could have access to grant lines. So, and, and they committed to a side, to sidewalks at that entire intersection. Because as we have said, that's a potential interception that could be a town center.
So there's no obligation to homeowners or developer to do it? It's just an easement on the way?
Right, unless they come in and ask for something more in the future. And then negotiations are open. At that one.
So that's, that's all this game is, is a property easement on the first side.
In a place where we are imagining, or having a hard time imagining when that someday is going to happen.
I agree, and we're giving you a sidewalk on the other side.
Right, and that's where I'm at, and I think we all are at that. It just makes sense. Consistency is guaranteed, but I want to be able to, I know we all, in my short time here, want to work with, you know, obviously, we had conversations through the last three, four meetings, so we want to make this work. And I wasn't trying to double jeopardize you guys and double pay and everything else that you get a little bit hot about, but I think we can just pull heads to prevail on this. And I think, I think what Matt said makes sense in that letter P. Then you guys are not beholden to something that you already paid for across the street. I think that's fair.
But in the terms of the sidewalk, we're complying with the terms of the October 2nd order? And that's part of the condition.
And the construction or development easement would be consistent with our specifications for sidewalks, which we, the engineers can specify.
Yes.
If nothing in this construction pattern would interfere with this easement, it's already, it's already.
Not that I recall, no.
No, it's, it's, it's.
It's bounding in an existing trailer.
It's really just taking the existing trails, putting it inside the easement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah, or not the existing trail, but the proposed trail.
Proposed trail, yes. Which that's already in the.
Right. Want to make a motion?
Well, you really complicated it, you know.
So Rich has, as he says, the prior, no, no, I'm sorry. It's the, it's the revised language, so it's what's before you with the additional condition that the developer will provide a, 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 a development easement dedicated to the township for public purposes, encompassing the proposed macadam trail for possible future development to, a sidewalk to extensive specifications, a concrete side.
So that one word with all that can't beat deferred versus waived.
Well, again, it's. We've negotiated to a point.
Motion, go ahead. Do I hear a motion? I make a motion without resolution 2025-11 for preliminary plan approval for the crossings at Kukaliko, at Kukaliko application as presented with
The additional.
The additional condition that the development easement.
A public access development easement be granted in that.
I'll second that.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, you don't want. All right, moving on. Resolution 2025-12, Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant. You got that one too, you want to grant?
No, I think this might be rich.
Just a second, wait.
Yeah.
Sorry, Rich.
No worries. Yes, so, so that you guys aren't surprised on the road that we got a grant. We have to do the matches for it. They asked us to do this resolution that's submitted with the grant application. We've worked out the grant basically for the Reemstown Pool. Primarily, the big ticket item is plumbing and inside the pool building all the pipes that service both the women's side and the men's side of the building. Construction of a splash pad instead of the baby pool. Those are the, those are the big items. So it's, the request is for $250,000 in funding for the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program.
So a quick question.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm going to put you on the spot and sorry because you weren't here when we did it. Or when we, I was on the board. I'm here plumbing on the women's and men's side. What did we do last year?
We replaced urinals and other bathroom facilities.
Fixtures or?
Fixtures and plumbing.
Fixtures.
And plumbing, that's all leaking.
I don't, I don't know that it got into the main plumbing system, might have just been.
We removed a lot of leaking copper defects, so I guess we didn't do it all.
I think it's a lot of it's on the drain.
Defer.
The taxes all began.
And I guess there's only the pecs on one side.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, 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 I'm on the site this morning, so I believe, my understanding of it, the pecs is on one side, not on both.
Okay. Fair enough. All right, I'll make a motion without resolution 2025-12 for the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant application as presented.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we got the zoning amendment request from Kukaliko Commons. Are you, good evening?
All right, good evening, board members. Claudia Shankle, Ms. Miesel, and Nora here on behalf of Bennerston Development Group. We're here this evening with a petition to amend the zoning ordinance and zoning map. We've discussed this with you a number of times. What we are proposing to do at this point in time is rezone the frontage of the Bennerston property that I know you're well familiar with, approximately 28.1 acres from C2 commercial to C1 commercial. And that would allow us to go forward with the construction of Sheets Convenience Store there along the frontage of the property, as well as preserving some additional space on the property for community commercial uses. Your C2 district is a regional commercial district. We don't think that we're going to be able to get that type of commercial development on the property, but we think we may be able to target some smaller commercial uses. The back section of the property that we've talked about a number of times would remain C2. There's no change to the zoning there. There are also a few amendments that are proposed to your ordinance related to the proposed sheets, the way that your ordinance is written now. In the C1 district, you need to get three separate special exceptions for a convenience store, fueling station, and drive-through food services. So what we've basically done is combined those three special exceptions into one special exception with many of the same criteria that those three separate special exceptions have. And concluded that petition as well. So what we're asking for this evening is simply for you to refer this to the Township and County Planning Commission. There's no other action for you to take tonight. Once they've completed their review of the petition, you would then return to refer a public hearing. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, well, I, I think we've all had plenty of time to examine the sketch plan as presented. And, you know, I think there's, there's perhaps some concerns, for me anyway, or through the odds and ends that we see there. But, you know, I, I think there's, there's no reason why somebody go after the planning commission and for us to get feedback from them and see what their response is.
I, I, I concur with that too. I'd like to see a good planning, I'm looking at the plan right now. There are a couple of things on here that I'm kind of not okay with, but obviously, sending it to the planning commission, getting their feedback and kind of going from there, I think at least we can kickstart it and see where we're at and see what, what the playing grounds look like.
Not to make the long meeting longer, but I, I'm curious what your concerns are because I just want to make sure that we're aware of what we're going at.
So my, my biggest concern, and I, I think I touched on it before, is the truck parking.
Okay.
I know there's some residential houses right there. They're idling on like long first off. And second off, I think you guys showed like 30 or maybe 35 at, at the end there. Because that, because then there's like a little parking lot or something next to that, right?
Right.
With, and our chiefs here, with all this kind of like humid trafficking stuff we keep hearing about and truck stops, I just, I just don't want that in my town.
So the, the truck parking, is that your concern as well?
Well, I think there's too many there, but if that would be the case, I, I personally like, you know, with, I want to see what planning is going to say about if we can enforce no overnight parking. we can enforce no overnight parking, uh, there, uh, no overnight parking on the boulevards. I know, I know there's resin here tonight. Um, I got contacted over the week as well by another one. Um, they're constantly complaining about Lausch Road, uh, no truck parking there, but they still park there. Then there's urine bottles thrown on their properties and stuff and, and we wanna make sure that we're not gonna be creating more of that. Um, so I know it's gonna be an enforcement thing for our police department and I'm sure they'll, they'll be able to go on there, but, uh, what I, the feedback I've been getting is they'll enforce it, that trucker will leave, they leave, 10 minutes later, another truck's in there. So we gotta actually, we can't keep an officer there all the time just, just doing that around the clock. Um, but that's, that's kinda my biggest concern of, of overnight truck parking. I know you guys mentioned, uh, that there's, they're not gonna have like showers there or whatnot for them to like, it's not actually a truck stop.
Right.
Uh, so, you know, that, that's kind of where, where I'm at. But, but I am in favor of something like that coming here, like the sheets, uh, to kinda kick off this property 'cause everyone talks about it. Everyone wants to see something commercial here and that's gonna be the property.
Understood.
Yeah, I, I guess there was some language there talking about noise control based on, um, some kind of, um, national standard.
It's bothering.
Yes.
It allows for both the other noise and issues.
And, uh, you know, there again, I'll refer to some of the residents that are adjoining there, uh, that have concerns about noise and, and such with the trucks and, you know, maybe just a line of Evergreens or Arboretis might not be enough to really, um, meet the criteria that we're, we're looking for than the residents are looking for there.
Understood.
You know, that, that generalizes it quite a bit, the way I look at it.
And we really are talking about, at this stage, will it be permitted? And the second topic is how will it be designed? And, and that, because you have a text amendment, does open up the discussion on that.
When the, when the ordinance addresses an issue like that in a general way, um, you know, how do you later come back and say, oh no, we, we want something a little more defined than, than.
Well, then there's, you know, then my development does give a site specific. So the ordinance technically will apply to any similar convenience store with truck parking in that zoning district, but this particular location, again, you made a site specific condition that kind of crosses that, you know, to my recollection, we've never done before, um, does its particular pulse.
And are you showing any kind of EV parking? I thought I have an EV, but I know the sheets in effort has it. Uh, are you guys showing anything on this plan right now?
I do not know if there's anything on the plan now. I know that the way that it works with a lot of convenience stores is they'll have a contract with one of the companies like Tesla or whatever. They'll put the, the, the guts in the ground basically and then they'll come through and decide after the store's built whether there's a non-trafficking area to support putting in the, the charging stations.
Just so the board is also aware, uh, we will do a review of this, uh, similar as we've done it for other zoning requests or text amendment requests or so on and so forth. So some of those informational items will be presented, uh, for review by the planning commission as well as part of the conversation and then eventual recommendation to, to the supervisors. So I just wanted to point that out. Obviously, the county will have their role as well, uh, in that process, but, uh, I just thought I'd mention that because I know a lot of the concerns related to the, the truck parking and so forth might be able to be more refined or suggested revision perhaps to maybe refine some of those concerns that you might have as part of the review.
Uh, it's, it's feedback, you know, to the residents.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I, I think it needs to be addressed.
We appreciate the feedback. I'm not gonna be in front of you again on this until we're at the hearing and, you know, I'd rather have the feedback now than then. Great. So we'll see what you do to address that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with moving forward to the planning commissions. Um, again, we're here to represent the citizens, so their complaints are our complaints and our, their issues are our issues. So I don't have anything further than what these two gentlemen already said, further my concerns, human trafficking, light and noise.
I know you're new, so obviously we should have commented on this prior to the meeting, but go ahead, state your name.
Here, Barry Deller. I live in Miles, Georgia. Um, I did truck with, uh, traveled with the RV and stuff like that. And I, one thing about RV parking and, and, uh, truck parking, I went in a, one, I think it was a Love's that they had air conditioning and heating for the trucks and they strictly enforced no running. They threw you out as soon as you ran. Is that something that would solve the problem? I know we get it down there with Dog Food Place, they're running those trucks all night long, someone.
Like a no idling.
They idle all night long and someone leave their headlights on and so it shines in my bedroom all night long.
Yeah. I don't think there'd be any, I mean, I don't wanna speak for sheets, but I doubt there would be any opposition to that because I know that they're not thinking of this even being like Love's. It's not gonna have the showers, it's not going to have the, you know.
And the dumpster, so they put their trash in because right now we have truck drivers that sit there at the Dog Food Place and toss it out the window. Cause I climbed up and wanted to throw it back into the window. And it's my yard.
Understood.
I mean, sheets would be managed that property and, uh, usually the sheets is.
The sheets in effort was a garbage dump out along that, that retaining wall until Facebook started trashing, then they cleaned it up a little.
Something for our zoning, we need zoning officer to keep an eye on it.
Yeah. All right. I'll make a motion to refer the proposed sheets, zoning ordinance, text amendments to Technicon, East Kikalco Township Planning Commission, and the Lancashire County Planning Commission for a review.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You gonna head out, Mike?
Yeah.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Gary.
Good evening.
All right, moving on to the Hertzog Garage zoning hearing board application representation. Matt, you got something for us for that?
Right. So actually Hertzogs and Citizen Storage are similar.
Yes.
Circumstances and, uh, the distinction is that, um, Hertzog is scheduled for the zoning hearing on, uh, May 14th.
Right.
Both of these, uh, property owners have gotten notices of violation, uh, for operating, um, uh, yeah, uh, vehicle rentals. And, uh, Hertzogs has appealed that notice of violation, uh, but also requested zoning relief to be permitted to do it. Citizen Storage has not appealed the notice of violation. Um, so, uh, the question on Hertzog is whether you wish to send a solicitor, uh, to represent the township in relation to the, um, appeal of the notice of violation, but more importantly, the request for zoning relief, uh, which will permit them to continue the use that's currently not permitted on the property. Uh, and then in the case of Citizen Storage, whether you wish to, uh, pursue the enforcement process, which the next step would be to take it to the Magisterial District Judge.
So for Hertzog, um, if I recall correctly, uh, they used to have a car dealership right next door, if I'm not mistaken.
It was there on the property.
It's on the property. Yeah. Yeah, right there.
At the garage.
At the property. So now they're not doing that no more, so they moved in U-Haul trucks.
Right.
So I guess if they go to the zoning and try to appeal that and try to get permission for that, if you would represent, would you be representing on to pretty much tell them?
No. Well, the, the only reason to send us would be to emphasize any opposition the township would have to use.
Hertzog in their application is uninherited, the board makes the argument that it's an equivalency that, that maybe we're trying to get anybody to get, but one of the approaches is that there's no difference in traffic and such with the rent truck versus a used car.
The way you've explained this, we're, we're basically interfering with the zoning board and allowing them to make the decision.
Well, no. Uh, typically, again, this board does, uh, allow the zoning hearing board to operate without us actively participating. Uh, the township is always party to that proceeding, whether we choose to participate or not. Uh, it's just, um, again, not typical for us to ask ourselves this question, uh, but the question is, is this a matter that is important enough to register your objection on the record, uh, by presenting an argument to the board? It could go the other way. Municipalities rarely send their solicitor, but it happens, rarely sends their solicitors to support an application for the zoning hearing. Uh, but again, in the past, we've been satisfied and we've had some contentious applications and we've been satisfied with, uh, the zoning hearing board, uh, exercising their discretion responsibly.
I agree, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I, I personally don't think we need representation there and like, we got a great group of people there and I think they can figure it out and make the determination for that, for citizen, uh.
And again, if that's the consensus, you don't need to do anything.
Yeah.
We don't need any motion.
Yeah, very good.
For citizens, uh, uh, for, uh, again, we've had, Rich has had contact with, uh, U-Haul's, uh, national headquarters, but they haven't, they haven't done anything properly within the context of Pennsylvania, how well procedures.
I think Rich said to the attorney from U-Haul out in, I don't know where in the United States, sent an email, right, saying that, that they are permitted to use and they called it at that, but.
So their failure to appeal the notice of violation means that they can't challenge the notice of violation. And the only issue for the MDJ is how much of a fine. Now, alternatively, I should say, if we want them to stop their operations and we would need to go to the court of common pleas for an injunction, the MDJ can only find them.
So I brought this up, you weren't here, Bernard, that was here. Uh, for me, it's, it's a safety issue as well because now that that whole little strip is rented out to Edward Jones and the karate place and they have an office there, an actual office for all the rental, uh, storage, the parking lot's always pretty packed. Um, adding a whole bunch of U-Haul vehicles into parking spots and around back where they're along the fence where they're not supposed to have trailers and U-Haul trucks and stuff, case of an emergency fire or whatever, I think our ambulance would have a hard time accessing without plateaus. Um, so in my opinion, I, I personally think we should continue before. If they think that they're okay, well, you should probably come get relief instead of just assuming you're okay with, with doing stuff if we, if the zoning board will permit that use.
Right. Again, they can no longer appeal the notice of violation, but they can ask for the use variance.
So I know it's new owners, uh, to that property, so I'm, I'm thinking they're trying to maximize their income there and they're trying to do anything they can to bring more money in for the property, but I think they should have asked prior to.
And, and our standard is contrary to the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. So all of your concerns fall within that category. Um, Rich and I can craft a, a response to the lawyer and explain Pennsylvania law to him and, uh, and give them a, an alternative.
So the rental, rental units are still there on that site?
Like U-Haul?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
And again, you know, as we repeatedly say, we're, we're not interested in punishing anybody. We're, we're interested in the parks.
We'll explain the law and if they wanna move forward, we can move forward.
Good. All right, we'll take our break.
Need a motion for that?
No. You're just, no.
Are you good, are you good with that? You're good with that too? And you guys are good with no representation at Hertzog?
Yes.
I know we skipped over that, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, we got spending limits. I know in the past I had brought this up, uh, in the past, um, when I first started, I recall, uh, I think when, uh, Mike Heschin was here as the interim, the board had set spending limits for, uh, all department heads. Um, being that we have an interim, obviously, no offense to you that I would trust you or anything, but, um, I, I, I personally think we should set some spending limits till we get our new manager in here and try to see how he or she wants to do things moving forward. I just don't want an open checkbook, uh, for anybody just to be buying things and then there's a list of bills right here that I gotta sign tonight. I, I don't know what surprises are in there. I, I hope not, 'cause you approved one, but, yeah, normally even good at calling about it, so, um, I just, I just don't wanna, don't wanna spend any money on things that we may need but don't need. And then it just sits on shelves and we just spent $2,500 for something or $3,000 for something and, and here we go. So, but, uh, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, what, what numbers you guys are thinking about, if you even wanna implement spending limits. Uh, it's up to you guys.
I'll open the panel where it's remote for quiet that I'm here. Somebody said so. I was. I, I think, I think spending limits are a, a good idea. I mean, I know we have a budget, we have a very good budget in place right now, we spent a lot of time on that, but the only way to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible for that is to make sure we're not, uh, you know, losing out the backend as quickly as it's coming in front. So I, uh, I'm, I'm force betting on this. And these look pretty decent. It still gives flexibility that you don't have to be voting on things like that, but it also gives, you know, I think it gives a lot of flexibility actually on the law. These are very, these are pretty high ones.
I mean, to, to, to my defense, I don't know. This would be, you need 2022.
How many recall in the loadout on this one?
It was the most recent one we found and, uh, it doesn't look like it was approved.
Wasn't.
I don't think it is.
Yeah, I, I need to recall soon.
Maybe it wasn't brought forward.
I wasn't German either back then. Chief who gives you carte blanche to buy $7,500 of ammunition.
Thank you.
We don't need to do more than that. I guess that's about 50 rounds to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, uh. I mean, Jeff, you, you look at this very closely. You, I think these limits are high, but it's not really setting the limit. Yeah, I, I, this was a whole lot more detailed than I remember directives in the past.
I can clean it up and boil it down and get to you, guys. I know the question we need to announce.
Yeah, how about, how about I'll give you some amounts after the meeting personally? Have Melody put it in our memo tomorrow. Show the board what they think, we can put it on next, next agenda. Instead of hashing line over and by line now, we'll clean it up, we'll, we'll get a draft out in our weekly memo and, uh, we'll load on it at our next meeting. We'll table it. We'll pay more for that.
Yeah, I agree.
That way it gives me a chance also to talk with the chief and make sure we're not going to get him in a crunch, obviously. Is that cool?
Yeah, sounds great.
All right, interfund transfer bill list and payroll.
General fund bank account listed bills in the amount of $118,921.73 for the week of April 18th and $20,752.75 for the week of April 25th. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries.
Okay, developers fund listed bills in the amount of $2,788.50 for the week of April 25th. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Capital reserve fund listed bills in the amount of $17,169.7 for the week of April 18th and $456.83 for the week of April 25th. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We have a hydrant fund listed bills in the amount of $16,650 for the week of April 18th. Any question there? I make a motion, seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Electronic payment listed bills for a pay period of April 6th to April 19th in the amount of $105,304.84. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
There's your.
Thank you. New business. I'd like to inform the public, our new zoning officer, Steve Dobson, started on Monday. Still on a fantastic job so far. Just spoke to Rich about him earlier and he said he really kicked off pretty well.
He did clear up a backlog he had and on the third day he was here.
Good.
And that was the first thing we did on the tax counties, certainly, and township working on some improvements and answering questions for residents and permanent questions. So, yeah, he's right, hit the ground running.
Good, thank you. Bring up the well on Stevens real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
The authority was just granted, was just given authority for a loan, over $3 million to do water treatment facility over Stevens so that we'd be able to get that loan back up and running. We're in a hard spot. If another well were to go down, we'd be in the dudoo. So, to use authority words, there's, they hope that this facility will be retrofitted, I guess is the right word for it, by the end of summer, so it'll be up and running with that, but we needed the three and a half million to get that funded in order to do that. There's a low interest loan for the authority, but that puts the authority even more in debt. So just as, you know, the authority can speak for themselves, but just as a concerned citizen for the East Calico, that puts them around $12 million in debt at low interest, but still around $12 million in debt between Meadowbrook, that, and I forget the little work project they just had to do to.
Kurt's route.
Yeah, thank you. That put them significantly behind the eight ball and they needed to get those. So those loans are somewhere around one and a half to two percent, I believe, but good news is, is that hopefully the facility will be done by the end of summer and they'll be back up and running and then we'll be good to go there. So, yeah. Thanks for your report.
I guess that you, the overruns there at Meadowbrook were extensive too. I think it was short of half a million dollars.
I think it was more than that.
Was it the final number?
Yeah, I think it was over $9 million.
Yeah, infrastructure is expensive.
So the three town pad loan was for.
They had to bring up their treatment plant up there. There was a lot of sinkholes there.
Yeah.
Well, I.
They already owe, they still owe quite a bit of money on that treatment plant, so they're still paying on the treatment plant. So the option was, do we just do a new well or do we retrofit this one? Because they still owed so many money, so much money on this, the thought was, well, logistically and economically it made sense to put the three and a half million dollars needed into this facility instead of moving it to a different one.
Became a sinkhole problem, I guess, with service and town finishing, right?
Right.
You get that info from Scott, I assume?
Right.
Scott Carr?
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing it back. That's good. Good, there's a line of communication there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The township's moving in a very good direction with our communication, with our counterparts, our neighboring municipalities, our own authority. Really, as we're about to talk about next, it's about truly bringing the community together.
I guess part of that was a regional meeting last week where we went on for a lot, two hours after something that normally an hour or less.
Yeah, what Jeff is referring to is we had the Kekaliko leaders meeting where we have all of our neighbors come and their leaders and the school district, and that was one of the longer meetings we've had. And the biggest topic of discussion for the longest amount of time was how do we work together as Kekaliko community rather than doing things on our own intersections, for example, like 897 and 272 or projects with three authorities or just about everything. And the ups and downs of seeing different things that we're all beholden to with regards to bureaucratic red tape that takes forever to putting new well pumps in and having to pay a fee for it. All kinds of stuff were brought up to the table. It was really enlightening and good to see the other leaders in their neighboring municipalities just really diving in to making sure they're taking care of their citizens and doing it constitutionally and as leaders we were faulted.
There was talk about bringing our legislators into the regional meeting to discuss with them some highway improvements or other needs within the community. And I think that's a really good idea to bring forward. Everybody at the table agreed to move forward with that idea. We heard a report from the school district about funding. They had talked to one of the legislators and gave a report about that, our state senator. And I think the numbers there were that they're coming in the budget season there at the school district. They were cutting $1.9 million, I think, from their budget, not letting some early retirement happening and shuffling some other personnel around, cutting some programs. But they had a conversation with Chris Gebhardt, our state senator, and I think the feedback we got from him was that there's a $4 billion shortfall in the upcoming state budget. And he said that there was no, you know, path forward for more funding. The governor had proposed $500 million of additional educational funding and superintendent explained that Kekaliko would be eligible for zero of that. And I think she said Elko and Elanco and there was a fourth district. All four districts.
Tank leaders.
All four districts would get no additional funding under the governor's latest idea. So they were rather disappointed in that. So just for informational purposes only, the stuff we heard that was, most already weren't there to hear that, so.
So in a nutshell, I am a big, it starts with you and we represent you. A lot of the conversation was making sure we go to our state senators or state reps or federal reps and seeing what they can do, but we all know how hamstrung a lot of our local guys are. So if you don't want to see your taxes go up, you got, you as we the people need to start raising our voices. Some of the reasons that our school district was not getting some of this funding that the governor wants to put forth were less than becoming, leaning more towards a socialist type agenda rather than, rather than actual constitutional. And this was voted on by both Republican and Democrats and now they were deciding how this money was getting spread out. And so that personally gets me pretty fired up and we need to remember that it is we the people, by the people, of the people. And our legislators, I would say 90% of them are not there for the right reasons, Republican or Democrat. So it needs to start with you in these chairs. The school is running scared and if you don't want to see your school taxes go up this year again, which more than likely they will be, we need to start having conversations and seeing if we can start to get money to the folks that are actually managing their money well and doing the right things as opposed to giving the money to the folks that just because they have certain demographic of students, they get money. And we don't have that here and that's where the actual decision process was made. So it is really disheartening and disappointing and I think we heard that from Ella Mosser and from Doug Graville, but we all need to really wake up to what's going on out there. And if we don't do it in this room right here locally, then it's not going to happen. There's only so much space everyone can do, there's only so much Chris Gebhardt can do. It needs to really start here and you all know that.
Change the subject a little bit. I just want to let you guys know, I spoke to William Clark today, director of land use and transportation at the planning department in Lancaster. He sent me a link, he was referring to me by another supervisor in one of the neighboring communities. He sent me a link and I will forward that to Rich and Melody to submit troubled intersections in East Calico Township. It's a way of getting our hat in the ring. They will review it with the whole board down there this summer. He says, I'm not guaranteeing you anything, but when they send out these surveys that only municipality, municipalities with, I guess, their login credentials that Melody would probably have or you have to their system can submit. And I was thinking to put on there like the Money Creek Church Road and 272 intersection, 897, 272 intersection and possibly the Church Street 272 intersection. Throw those there. If we get lucky and they pick it, great. If not, we'll just keep trying to see if there's, if they'll throw any improvements here in East Calico. But I will forward that to you and Melody tonight, yeah, after the meeting.
What was the third intersection you just mentioned?
272 and Church Street.
I guess, oh, in my email the other day, I'm not sure whether you gentlemen got it or not, but I used to Clean Water Partners, a meeting in two weeks with an informational update. I've attended them in the past and if you don't mind, I'm trying to see if my schedule allows me to get there again this year. Just a short hour and a half, a two hour presentation, but. So I'll come back with a report if, if I can make it, if I can, I'll let you guys know who we want to eat to once.
No problem.
Am I slowing down as we, it was the Lancaster Water Partners?
Clean Water. And now that you wrote that down, one of the words may be wrong. I'll follow that. I think I got it.
All right. Moving on to whole business, Stevens Fire Company discussions. I received another letter April 30th, which was yesterday. Apparently it was hand delivered by Jim Black. Said they couldn't attend unfortunately because of a short notice and we will be in contact with you. And I gave him two weeks. I emailed them while I was sitting here last time. So I called. I called him yesterday just so you guys are on the same page in case another letter comes in saying that they think it's disrespectful that I contacted them without you guys knowing. I called him, left him a message, he called me back and I told him that they need to get here, we need to have this discussion. I wasn't going to be the messenger if he wanted to tell me stuff to bring it back to you guys. I would like to have them here in the room and they can tell us what's going on. I don't want to be the messenger. I told him, I did express to him that I didn't appreciate getting that letter. It brought back memories to my first year here when one of my board members knew about a helicopter showing up at Stevens and I didn't. I knew nothing about it until I saw RVs showing up, vents, helicopters and all that stuff. So I informed him of that and I informed him that I'm keeping politics out of this because I want to do what's best for the community. And he responded to me saying they're doing the same thing. Okay, so I don't know what else you guys want to add to it. I want to keep my thoughts to myself because I would like to ask them a couple of questions when they do come forward. My opinion is very, very important. You heard a resident in the night at the beginning of our meeting, he brought up a lot of good facts. We're giving $35,000 to this fire company. They didn't come to us, they didn't tell us this was happening and we pay for their, we pay for their insurance for their apparatus, we pay for their workers comp insurance. Now Denver's running in East Calico and running command in East Calico, so I don't know, God forbid something were to happen, Matt, I don't know legally, are we liable for Denver running in East Calico or would that fall on Denver? I don't know.
I've never heard of such a thing, so I don't have an answer for you.
You never heard of someone else giving command to somebody else? Okay. So there, there's an issue in itself. Our solicitor's telling us the same thing here. So he's raising good questions here as well. And the thing that gets me the most is, and I'll say it because I said it to him on the phone, I get really ticked off about this. And no, this board will not be giving this letter out to anybody in the public. Whoever wants it can wait to know it, because I was told someone gave a copy out to people in the audience last time and that's not going to happen again tonight. When I mentioned this isn't political and I was told that they're doing the same thing, my response back was, this is the second letter I've received from Stevens Fire Company, Station 73. Why is LMPCC to this? And I didn't get a response. So I'm going to leave it at that. You guys say whatever you'd like to say. We will have them on the agenda for the next agenda again. Rich, because Jim Black said he will be here at the next meeting, I will call him to reconfirm, but I have a plan in my head, what I would like to do moving forward. They shut me down twice already. Third time, I hope they show up because I'm ready to move forward with my plan, whether they're here or not, so I'll leave it to you guys.
A quick question. So they had an issue with the letter going out for public? That was mentioned as a problem, even though it was CC'd to the newspaper for public distribution?
My, what I was told by Mr. Black was, I don't know how Mr. Alexander got the letter because his copy's still sitting on my desk. I never mailed it to him, but he already has it. So I don't know if, I'm not gonna put Larry on the spot, but I don't know if somebody contacted him or vice versa. And I don't care. I don't want to know because I'm not playing politics in emergency services in my community. I just want to do what's right for the community. I don't care about the politics. I'm not gonna get involved and I don't want to know. I'm not gonna even ask you.
I'll tell you right now, I handed it to him.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
I never got any CC. They're CC'd LMP to come to me.
It's a public meeting.
Well, you didn't get it yet because it's still sitting on his desk. That's what I was told, so. But you're CC'd to this one too, so if you don't get it, you can call him and ask where it's at.
It was CC'd. We discussed it in the meeting. We all but read it out loud. I handed it to Larry.
Well, one thing, one thing I just don't like is, we're talking, I've gotten letters here from Reemstown. I've gotten letters from Smokes Town. They're not CCing the paper. It's literally information we're getting from our fire companies. Every piece of paper that I've been getting from them in the last two, three weeks is CCing the paper. I know who's behind it. I guarantee you, I'm not gonna say it. But if that person were to show up, I got a couple of words for that person as well. You guys, you guys, you guys want to talk?
I, you know, as much as we're talking about trying to make, trying not to make it political, it just keeps going down that path. I'm just gonna express my opinion on the situation. Before I was on this board, as, you know, just an attendee of meetings, going to different fire call meetings, I've always had the goal of bringing our fire departments together and strengthening that. I've always had the goal of building our community and strengthening our community. That's always been my end means to everything that I've been doing. So all the meetings that I had with the chiefs, some that are no longer with us, have always been to that end. Everything that I see across all of the region's departments are the same, the same issues. Across the entire county, across our state, across our country, each of our fire departments have the same issues. I've mentioned in this meeting before that, you know, when we were talking about numbers, we're talking about how there's a lot of pride and dedication in the fire departments. But some of our departments are putting aside some of those prideful feelings to make sure that they live into perpetuity by coming together. And that has always been the conversation. That has always been the, you know, the direction of every chief that I've talked to. I'm just highly disappointed in the actions of Stevens through the conversations we've had with my personal conversations over the last couple of years. I'm disappointed in their actions. This has nothing to do with Denver. This has everything to do with the actions of Stevens and not trying to work together with our current East Kokaliko departments. Because I have heard from other departments outside of East Kokaliko that think that a Kokaliko regional department is probably the only path, not the only, but one of the only paths moving forward. And this was just a start. And Stevens had every opportunity to do that and for some reason, because of pride or because of something else or politics, they decided to go outside the box, open up a whole new can of worms, not to the fault of Denver, but it's just, now I just don't understand. I'm not gonna speak on their financials, but I feel like they're a sinking ship that's just grasping and they just went to the wrong, they're swimming away from shore instead of going towards the two departments that were hoping to have them come with them. And it just doesn't make sense to me. I'm just disappointed. And I hope, I wish the best for them, but I cannot continue to support that path. My personal opinion. Just disappointed. Because there's been a lot of work being done, talk outside this room today.
Well, I guess the resident addressed the issue a little bit here at the start of the meeting and, you know, the letter that was sent previously, I haven't seen the latest one that Lorenzo is talking about, but talked about how they were, that their fire company were having conversations with Denver and Denver Fire Company. And, you know, that's fine in my opinion. If they want to do that, Denver wants to do that. But it clearly shows there's some kind of need there at Stevens that they're not able to fulfill themselves, that they're looking for outside help. So if it's Denver, that's fine, but, you know, I see we have as a board multiple options. In the past, we've talked and we've even budgeted money for a consolidation specialist in the fire personnel business. And, you know, it was never followed up. We have a president in the room that heard of a presentation by him at one time years ago. And, you know, I don't know if it would be helpful at this time. You know, we have an option of sending a letter to Denver. Maybe they would come and tell us what the conversations would be and what they would, were talking about with our company since our company won't show up.
We'll bring them into the mix.
Well, there's been, the state of there was talk, so.
We're not, I want to hear from the people that are taking the taxpayer's money at Denver. That's what you need to speak up.
Everybody's got to know the truth and, you know, I think that maybe Denver's just way from this. So, but that's, it's just a law, so.
I see your point, Jeff. You know, if that's gonna help, if it's gonna help Stevens by getting help from Denver. At the end of the day, all of our departments are gonna have to make some hard decisions here if they want to stay active, to say, you know, and it's, the writing is on the wall, but.
Yeah, we have to understand. I think it's great that they finally were able to accept that they need help. I think that's great. And they went and looked for help, just not possibly where we wanted to go to. So at the end of the day, it's gonna be on us whether we say, "Okay, that's great. I'm happy you joined Denver. That's wonderful."
Is that even the case, really?
Well, when I say join is, you know, they run jointly. Whether or not we accept it or not, then that's our decision. But I'm glad they actually said they need help and they put it in writing that they need help because they don't run command at a lot of their calls. I'm assuming they only run command at the helicopter pad because Denver won't come in. But again, that's okay. But we have it in writing. They needed help and they went to them. But how that looks for us, I mean, we're gonna have to talk about it.
Liability wise as well?
Our solicitors say never or something like that, so.
And what does it do to the relief association?
That and the $35,000 that each company gets. Once, again, I'm not gonna say anything else, but I have my roadmap in my head, how I see it going. I'm gonna give them one more chance. You fool me once, you fool me twice, you ain't gonna fool me a third time. If you can't show up, I'm gonna go ahead and give my recommendation to the board. So I already have my roadmap in my head, how I see things going, so. You guys got anything else to say? May 6th, I'll just do announcements real quick. May 6th, boars meeting with our headhunter. We're gonna be starting our interviews. We narrowed it down for our manager. We had a list of 12. We narrowed it down to our top three. And we're gonna be doing interviews from like 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. here. So, yeah, we'll be here for pretty much the whole day. Just for your guys' information quick, I did email Kintec because PPNL said it's not their guide wire of 272.
Connected.
Connected, whatever.
Windstream.
Windstream. I emailed Connected two weeks ago and got no response. I sent them a nasty email today and I'm gonna follow up with another one because they're just roping us along. They came up with excuses. But I saw that Pure Cycle was out there doing topsoil and they're ready to seed it and stroll it again. And here the sidewalks gotta get ripped out any day now and they're just, it's whatever.
You're right. The wire's still in the way.
The wire's still there. PPNL responded to me right away and said, "It's not ours. It's them. They tagged the people." They emailed and now it's in somebody else's hands. So I made myself a note. I'm gonna call tomorrow. The bridge has, right here, the culvert at the township building, there's an inspection tomorrow morning. Hopefully everything looks great. It looks awesome to me, but it's supposed to be open tomorrow by noon, is what I was told. Did that change?
If we get through the water tomorrow morning at 10, it'll open right after. It looks like the only thing we have left there is a little more mulching to do.
Good. I saw the guardrail got up today. All right, at this time, I'll open up the floor. Five minute per limit person, non-agenda items. If you'd like to come forward, please state your name and I'll start the timer. One at a time.
Good evening, Dan. We're making this quick. Curbing, stats up here. I think last week, last meeting you guys discussed, like, you guys were going basically contract with someone and there was potentially an option for homeowners to repair, or where do we stand?
I just had this conversation with Rich before the meeting. If there was one to come up, I already had the answer. You want me to answer? You want to? Go ahead.
Yeah, we're working with the contractor. We do have a line item that we can, that homeowners can balance substitute to get their curbs replaced. There are some pieces of the curbs that we need to take care of, drainage issues. But we're still, I'm still working with the contractor, trying to get as much time as possible so that we can get letters out and identify.
Okay, so there will be letters forthcoming?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there will be letters sent out, giving enough time, obviously, to get it done if it needs done. Personally, I'm actually gonna go out with Rich on Tuesday and go walk the development again and kind of look at things, just to scope some stuff out because like he said, there are parts that he thinks we should be responsible for because where the basins are at and stuff. It was just never done right from the beginning, from the get-go. And there's a lot of corner lots and obviously if we're gonna be responsible for it, the homeowner, great because they probably don't want to pay for that whole curb and it was on us from the beginning because they accepted the road back there. Wasn't built right.
And then the second thing is, I called up to mess with last week with the county road minister. It was after hours. I left a message. There's some potholes on the E and Linda coming in through. Obviously those roads are getting pushed back even further and blocked that process. So let me just take a swing through there.
Linda was on the list.
Throw some patch in there, you know, maybe five times. E and Linda.
Circle is on the list.
There's just a couple of spots where it's, it's kind of around the middle, so like, I think just throw the full patch in there. Five times is a middle. Yeah, thank you.
No comments, sir, about the hours?
I'll leave you go. It's long enough.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Lauren Colt. As most of you know, I'm running for the tax collector position. There was an article put in the Lancaster newspaper and I want to make some corrections to it. The current tax collector is stating that I am running for this position with the intention, if I can go to it then to turn it over to the community. I just want to make it perfectly clear that is not my intentions. I'm running for this position because I want to be part of our community. Also, she was insinuating for some reason that I go to the end of the township. I've been a resident of East Kokaliko Township for 35 years and this is probably what it'll be till the day I die. But that's it unless anyone has any questions.
Not for me. There's this guy, Wes T.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening, Dan. Alan Haxler. I live in the Meadowbrook Estates. One comment from Stevens Fire Company, you guys were saying, "I don't think we can totally resolve Denver with any responsibility in this." They could have come to us that, "Hey, we're having talks with Stevens," or you guys were, and they chose not to. For whatever reason, they chose not to. So I don't think, even though they might be an innocent bystander, I don't think we can totally resolve them with any responsibility in communicating, keeping that lines open with us. Second, the Meadowbrook Estates, do we know when they're gonna start grinding and paving our roads?
Do not.
That's what I'm afraid of. Second, myself and several other residents that I know of are starting to have sinkholes developed in the areas under the curbing where they did work. Now, I've been vocal in my opposition deation where from the start, they were a disaster of a contractor for this project. They remain to this day a disaster of a contractor for this project. Right now, I have a hole at least a foot deep along the curbing, going underneath the curbing in front of my property where they did work. I spoke with Scott Carl on this. He told me he may be more aware of it and they were gonna take care of it sometime in the future. To date, no one has stopped by to look at it at any of the properties that I'm aware of. And I feel like it's just gonna get pushed out and we're gonna end up paying the price because it's gonna sink and the curb's gonna fall further. The other issue we're having is at the bottom of our driveway, it is starting to sink. We have cracks at the bottom of our driveway now we never had before. And there's a little bit of a hump coming into our driveway that we didn't have before. We didn't have that before this construction started. So either the authority or somewhere, there's some responsibility needs to be to make that right. Because I don't want to have to dig my driveway up to make the repairs because of what they did. There were a lot of things they did when they were doing this construction phase where they had unsupported trenches. Things were not done the proper way and it's allowing this to go on. So I was just curious, wanted to bring that to your attention because I wasn't sure if Scott passed that on to you folks or not. I kind of doubt if he did.
I've not, I've not heard it, but have you attended the water and sewer?
I couldn't make the last one, but I do plan on running to the next one.
Yeah, because that, I'm assuming that's the one you want to, obviously let them know, inform them of it and see what they tell you in a meeting.
Yeah, when I asked them about the grinding and paving, they pushed it off on you.
But that is our responsibility.
So that's why I'm bringing it to your attention now, but I also wanted to make sure you were aware of the properties and the way they're starting to sink and the developments going on.
So we are, we are able to get on their schedule, but being with the whole curb situation, we're still trying to figure out, Rich got in contact with them, New Enterprise, and we're pushing out a little bit for later in the summer till we can figure this out and give people enough time to get these curb fixed. So I think by maybe end of next week, beginning of the other, I think we'll have a pretty, by next meeting, I should say, we should have a pretty good idea on when the letters are gonna go out and, and Rich, you think that two weeks is pretty good? Enough time?
Do we put that on as a point on the agenda, just to have a point of communication, whether it's whole business, whatever, just so we can get that?
Yeah, I mean, we're not talking about it anyhow.
Okay, cool.
It's written that we broke up, being on their own business.
Were you told that this contractor was gonna, should be coming back out to fix the curbs that they left out?
Said that they, well, not the curbs, but the sinkholes. They should be making repairs to those sinkholes and restoring the property to pre-construction condition.
The sinkhole next to the curb or the sinkhole in your yard?
Well, sinkhole's in my yard, but it's going down under the curb. So it's raised at the end of my yard where it meets the curb, where they finished going to work, yeah.
Causing the curb to drop as well?
I'm thinking it is, yeah. But this driveway especially, we didn't have any of this cracking at the bottom until they started doing this construction. Now we have it there. We'll make sure we can build conditions, seal code. No, not any work till now until we make sure that, I don't know what's going on with the condition of this. So I just wanted to bring you guys' attention, but I appreciate that. I'll look for an update at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. See you on our next meeting. Seeing honor, our next meeting will be Thursday, May fifteenth, at seven P M. here at the building, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Motion carries, happy to meet you tonight. Thank you.